I'm Susan Albertine. I'm president of the League of Women Voters of Montgomery County, and I'm delighted to welcome you to this important civic event. Education in Montgomery County matters to all of us, whether we have children in school or not. It's essential to our county. And it's essential, the League would say, for us to be informed when we cast our votes for Board of Education. That's what this forum is about, and that really fits within the mission of the League. We are nonpartisan, as I hope you know. We want every eligible voter to vote, and we are equally committed to voter education, so that when you vote, you know who you're voting for. This candidate forum will give you a chance to make decisions about the Board of Education candidates. And this is a community project, getting this event together. In fact, it's amazing. We have 24 community partners who are cosponsoring this event. That's pretty amazing to have 24. Thank you, yes. The lead partners are the League of Women Voters, the Montgomery County Council of PTAs, and the Montgomery County NAACP, and finally, Identity Incorporated. Joining the lead partners are AA Move, Asian Americans Mobilize, Organize, Vote, and Empower; Alpha Phi Alpha Sorority Incorporated; Theta Omega Omega Chapter; the American Association of University Women; the Black and Brown Coalition for Education Equity and Excellence; the Chinese American Parent Association of Montgomery County; Delta Sigma Theta Potomac Valley Alumni Chapter; the Jewish Community Relations Council of Greater Washington; Jews United for Justice; the Lynx Incorporated Potuxent River Chapter; the Lynx Incorporated Silver Spring Chapter; Metro DCP Flag; Montgomery College MC Votes; Montgomery County Jewish Parents Coalition; NCNW, the National Council of Negro Women; Montgomery County Section and NCNW Potomac Valley Section; OCADC, Asian Pacific American Advocates, and Young People for Progress. Thanks to all of those sponsors. It was really fun to put the program together and figure out how to get all those logos on the flyer. You will have an opportunity to submit written questions to the candidates on cards, and the cards are around. There are some in the back. If you would like to do that, you hand the card to an usher. You'll see us wandering around. So if you've got your question ready, just hand it to us. We will take it to the screeners up in the front, and maybe your question will be answered. Thank you for your continued support to educate and inform our county voters. We're so glad that you are all here. And now I would like to introduce Bridget Howe, who is president of the Council of PTAs.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. I'm Bridget Howe, president of MCCPTA, the Montgomery County Council of PTAs. Thank you so much, Susan, for that introduction to tonight's event. We're really happy to be working again with the League of Women Voters of Montgomery County to bring you this important event. Our goal is to help all of you learn more about the candidates for Board of Education so that you can be informed and vote for the best candidates to help you advocate for all of our children. We hope this event helps you, as a voter, make your selections for the consequential Board of Election -- I'm sorry, Board of Education election. Please tell your friends and colleagues who could not be here tonight that this is being recorded, and it will be put up and available at the League of Women Voters YouTube channel in English, and you can choose subtitles in other languages. Now, to get us started, I'm pleased to introduce our moderator, Tanya Bowie. And Tanya, sorry, who is the co-founder of AA Move, Asian Americans Mobilize, Organize, Vote, and Empower. Tanya focuses on increasing the political and civic engagement of Asian American communities at the local, state, and federal levels. She is also a former blogger for Montgomery Community Media, and her blog, Politics Within Politics, is aimed at building the pipeline for women of color in politics. Thank you for being with us tonight, Tanya.
Thank you so much, Bridget. Good evening, everyone. We're so honored and thrilled to be back in person for the General Election Forum, and how fitting it is that we're all here with the candidates tonight in the Board of Education meeting room. So as Susan and Bridget had mentioned, this event is for you all to have a good idea of who the candidates are, learn about their platforms, and have them convince you why you should vote for them in this general election. So there are three school board races and contention this year, and they are At Large, District Two, and District Four. And all the candidates for each race are here tonight. Coming from the At Large race, we have Ms. Lynn Harris and Rita Montoya. Their names are in the blue tents. From District Two, we have Brenda Diaz and Natalie Zimmerman, and their names are in the green tents. And from District Four, we have Shebra Evans and Laura Stewart, and their names are in the yellow tents. Welcome to you all. So all of these candidates must live in their districts, and all county voters may vote for their preferred candidate in each of the races. So we're going to group the candidates tonight, so you can see who will be competing against you, who. So before we begin, I'd like to share some housekeeping rules and some ground rules for tonight's forum. So first and foremost, please take a moment to silence or turn off your phones, so we do not disturb our candidates when they speak, and we do not want to disrupt our video recording for tonight. Secondly, we are excited that we do have a Spanish-language audience tonight, and I would like to invite Ms. Nora Morales from Identity to make an announcement about our Spanish interpretation that's available.
Si usted habla español y necesita una interpretación, por favor pida un audífono en la parte de atrás. También si queremos que todos que hablen español, si hagan una -- quieren hacer una pregunta, la escriben, y nosotros la vamos a aceptar. Así que, por favor, escribe su pregunta en la tarjeta. Y está Viviana en la parte de atrás, y la puede coleccionar. Si tiene dificultad en escribir, solo cuéntenos, y Viviana, que está sentada en la parte de atrás, puede escribir su pregunta. Gracias.
Thank you, Nora. So I'll continue with our ground rules for tonight. So when it is each candidate's turn to speak, please turn on your microphone by hitting the large button in the center, and you'll see that with the Talking Mouth icon. Your microphone will be on when the red light is on. So when you're done speaking, please turn off the microphone by pushing the button again, so the next candidate may speak. Your microphone will be off when the light is off. Tonight, we also have a timekeeper, as well as team members in the front row here, and they will be holding up signs throughout our event. Everyone will see those signs, including the audience. A yellow sign will indicate that the candidate will have 15 seconds remaining to speak. The red stop sign will indicate that time is up. Each candidate must stop at the end of their time, so everyone has an equal chance to respond. As moderator, I will allow you to finish your sentence. So we'll begin tonight with opening statements from the candidates. Each statement will be one minute. Then we will move on for questions submitted by the principal sponsoring organizations of this event. And after that, we will have our candidates answer the questions that we're taking from the audience tonight, and have the candidates respond to them. So as mentioned earlier, note cards are being handed out, and they're in the back as well. So please take a moment if you would like to submit your question. We do have a few things to require for those questions, though, is that we ask that you only put one question on each card. Please write clearly and legibly, so that I can read them. Please include the topic of the question above the written question. Each of these questions must be for all the candidates and cannot pertain or be for one specific candidate. So the questions must be for specifically the roles and responsibilities of the school board members. So when you're finished, hold up your cards. We have ushers here. They will take them to the screeners up here to my left. Once those questions are collected, they will go through for duplications and appropriateness, and I will read them out loud during that portion of the program. So now, each candidate has up to 45 seconds to respond to the question. So we'll keep the forum moving. We'll group the candidates by district or at large and ask them to respond to each question. Candidates will not be speaking in the same order for each question in order to be fair. And then we will close with having each candidate provide a closing statement, and those statements will be one minute. Okay. Are the candidates ready to begin? All right. So we are going to begin with opening statements. The timer clock will start when you begin to speak. Again, you have one minute. We're going to start with District Two candidates, and I'd like to welcome Ms. Natalie Zimmerman.
Good evening. Thank you so much, all, for being here, and thank you so much to our wonderful sponsors. My name is Natalie Zimmerman, and I am a candidate in District Two. I'm also a current MCPS classroom teacher. I currently teach third grade at Wheaton Woods Elementary School, and I absolutely love what I do. And I can tell you that today in teaching was a particularly good day because I didn't have to tie anyone's wet shoelaces. So when I have been in the classroom, one of the things that I've seen is that our decisions at the top are either completely uninformed or completely disregard what's going on in a classroom every single day. I believe that I can be a voice for educators on the Board of Education. I believe that I can be a voice for our students. I believe that I can speak to what is happening in our classrooms because of the time that I've spent there as a teacher in MCPS, and I believe that my connections to my colleagues will elevate that as well. I look forward to you hearing more about my candidacy, and thank you again for being here.
Thank you, Ms. Zimmerman. Brenda Diaz.
Thank you all for coming tonight. It is indeed an important election and an important year, so I consider it an honor and a privilege to be before you all. So my name is Brenda Diaz. I'm running, obviously, for Board of Education. And I was born and raised in the Bronx. My vision for MCPS is very much related to my own experience going to public school in New York City in the 1980s. I am the product of a gifted and talented program where I was given the opportunity to read Shakespeare. I was pushed and driven by my teachers to excel, and so that's the type of opportunities that I want to provide for children here in Montgomery County. I have been in education now for 20-something years in the public and private settings. I've taught elementary school all the way up to high school, former Gaitersburg High School teacher. And so I'm here to represent parents and their voice, students who want to excel and who will excel. I represent teachers as well. I'm a current teacher and will continue teaching. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Diaz. I'd like to call on District Four candidates. We'll start with Ms. Laura Stewart.
Hello. My name is Laura Stewart, and I'm running for the Board of Education for District Four. I'm so happy to be here. Thank you for having this forum. I see a lot of familiar and new faces in the audience. I've been a Montgomery County resident for 27 years, and my two children are recent MCPS graduates. Growing up, I learned about Takuna Lom, which teaches that it is my responsibility to make the world a more just place. For over a decade, I've brought that work to leadership positions in six different nonprofit boards, including executive positions for both Montgomery County and the State PTA. I'm a relationship builder who will work hard to ensure our kids get a world-class education. I have the experience to bring accountability, collaboration, and transparency back to the Board of Education, which is the oversight body for MCPS. I will bring my energy to the board, and I hope to earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Ms. Shebra Evans.
I love this crowd. It's so great to see everyone. Thank you to all of the supporters that gathered here today to make certain that you could hear our voices. As was stated, I am Shebra Evans, and I am a proud board member serving District Four. I've been in this county for over 23 years. My husband and I both moved here because of the quality of the public school system. So fast forward, I am still committed to ensuring that our students are having access and opportunity here in Montgomery County, and I've done that work. I've ensured that I've continued to make good on the promise that all of our students will graduate college, career, and community-ready, and that starts with having our students have access to early education. Pre-K expansion is taking place under my leadership. We have now 4,500 students, whereas before it was 1,000 less. I have been elected to serve as the Maryland State Association President-elect, and I will continue doing that work, not only at the local level but at the county level. Thank you so much for being here, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. And now, moving on to our At Large candidates, Ms. Rita Montoya.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for hosting this forum. It's really important for voters to be informed when they go to the polls, so I really appreciate all of you attending here tonight as well. My name is Rita Montoya, and I'm running for Board of Education Member-at-Large. I am a former PTA president and executive board member and attorney and former juvenile public defender and a passionate advocate. But most importantly, I am a current MCPS mom of two elementary school kids in third and fifth grades. So I live MCPS and all of its policies every single day. And that's how I know that if we want our children to meet their goals, if we want them to achieve, we have to make sure that all of their schools are fully staffed, that all of our schools have extracurricular programs available to all, that our students are safe from hate bias, physical violence, and that we have the supports for their mental health challenges, and that we rebuild trust in MCPS and the Board through strong leadership, accountability, transparency, and oversight. If we have high expectations for our kids and give them the proper guidance and support to foster their growth and resilience, MCPS can meet all students and move them forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Montoya. Lynn Harris.
I want to add my thanks to all of the organizational sponsors here tonight, because I remember back in 2014, when I was MCCPTA Vice President of Advocacy. It was the first time we partnered with the League of Women Voters to put on one of these forums to help voters do their homework before they cast their ballots. My name is Lynn Harris. I am a former MCPS teacher, the proud parent of a 2021 graduate of Einstein High School, who currently works as a parent educator at his former elementary school while he studies to be an elementary school PE teacher. I am a lawyer and a nurse, and I spent -- I cut my teeth on education advocacy as a local and countywide PTA leader, and three and a half years ago, I brought that background to do this work. And three and a half years in, my why is still the same: to push MCPS to become a school system where every spun, every day feels safe, welcome, and valued; to create inclusive and affirming classrooms where students see themselves and also learn to understand others; to hold MCPS accountable to doing the work to ensure every student gets an excellent education and every employee is treated well.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. So we have now finished our opening statements, and we're going to dive right into the Q&amp;A portion of our program. And so we're going to start with the first question, and the topic will be on funding and the budget. It is a two-part question. The capital improvement program of $1.9 billion covers the next six years of construction and maintenance of school facilities. Additionally, we've seen MCPS increase its budgetary ask for operations to $3.3 billion in the last three years. So what do you think is the most important funding priority in the upcoming year, and how will you ensure that the Board of Education remains a good steward of public funds? So I'm going to start with District Four candidates, and I'd like to call on Ms. Evans.
Thank you for that question. So what will be most important is that we, as board members, are monitoring the progress of our students, that we are evaluating the programs to ensure that we are achieving the academic progress that we have promised to do. And so you can do that best by making certain that we're seeing a return on investment on the programs, and if not, we no longer do those programs. I think it's really important that we continue to educate our community as well as our funders so that they know what our budget entails and know the needs of our school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Ms. Stewart.
I'll start with the capital budget. To me, we really need to focus on our HVAC systems and our maintenance of schools. I looked at the Infrastructure Maintenance Task Force report, and we are $1.1 billion in deferred maintenance, so we need to catch up. For operating budget, I really want to concentrate on making sure our kids are mentally ready to be in school. So we need to shore up those supports for kids and make sure they're getting the food they need. You can't learn unless you're actually able to eat, and not every kid, they're not always fed in school, believe it or not. So those are where I would start.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. I'll call on our At Large candidates, Ms. Lynn Harris.
That's a huge question for 45 seconds. I would say the most important thing for both CIP and operating budgets is to make sure that we can demonstrate clearly to our funders and the public that we're getting a return on the investment of our dollars, and that requires continuous structures of accountability which are publicly shared at all times over all areas of work. For operational priority, I think we have to continue to ensure that every student has the support that they need in their classrooms to both be well and do well. For our CIP, I agree with Ms. Stewart. We really need to focus in on our maintenance needs and looking at external sources that can help us fund that work, like Inflation Reduction Act opportunities and cleaning up our property portfolio.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Ms. Montoya.
We need to spend wisely. We have some financial waste and mismanagement that's going on. We see places like electric bus contracts where they're not being enforced properly or even perhaps written properly. We need to focus on, as a parent, right? I send my kids to school to learn, and right now, our kids can't do math and they can't read. So I would like to see us bring in some high-impact tutoring for our kids. There's studies that have shown that that's helpful and that we see the growth in terms of maintenance and kind of CIP funding and school facilities. A lot of our HVAC is not working well, and a lot of our school buildings. I know that Ms. Zimmerman has let me know that a lot of our schools don't even have locks necessarily on the doors, so when we talk about school safety, there's just some bare minimum things that aren't even happening, and we need to focus on those as well.
Thank you, Ms. Montoya. Moving on to District Two, Ms. Diaz.
Right. So we obviously need to prioritize safety. We need to prioritize how we spend our money. And so when we look at, you know, our capital programs where we need to invest in those areas, definitely we want to shore up our doors and make sure that entry into our buildings is not as easy as it has been in the past. I know that we had some issues at Gaitersburg High School, and Rockville High School has reported some issues. As far as, you know, our money, everything and prioritizing, every single dollar needs to be dedicated towards academic excellence, academic proficiency, raising our reading and writing scores, looking at tutoring programs, fully staffing our schools, transferring funds from our central office over to our children, and making sure that we remove the rot and the waste within central office and dedicate those funds to our children.
Thank you, Ms. Diaz. Ms. Zimmerman.
Thank you. First, I believe that budget season isn't really a season. It's actually a year-round conversation, and I think that we need to be turning it into one, not just a few months that we're talking about. I also think part of this problem here is our trust deficit, and we need to be turning that into a transparency surplus. We're spending billions of dollars in MCPS, and I can tell you that I look at some of the line items, and I wonder how that's connecting back to the eight-year-olds that I spend all day in front of. We need to make sure that when we go line item by line item, that it does directly connect back to our classrooms. I also believe that we need to be building positive relationships with other members of our elected, with other elected officials, and making sure that as funding continues, that we are being good stewards through those positive relationships. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to the second question, this topic will be on MCPS diversity. It is also a two-part question. It's crucial that we have a school system that reflects the diversity of the county in terms of curriculum, staffing, and culture. So what is your opinion on teaching critical race theory and other cultural diversity themes, and whether they should be included in our curriculum? And related to this, should parents be able to opt their children out of classroom instruction and materials that they might consider inappropriate? I'll start with District Two candidates. I'll call on Ms. Zimmerman.
Wow, that was a lot of items. First, I want to address the opting out there. I do not believe that opting out is part of -- I do not believe in opting out of curriculum. Maryland law does allow for families to choose to opt out of the sexual health and wellness portions of a curriculum, and of course, the Board is going to follow that law and uphold that. When it comes to the different elements and how we educate our students about each other and about race, those conversations can be difficult, but they are courageous and they need to happen. We need to make sure that we are bringing in experts to be part of those conversations to help guide us when we're doing so. I can tell you that the professional development that currently exists for our educators is more of a checkbox. One time, I was offered a program that I just had to click through and send an email that I did it. We need to do better than that.
Thank you. Ms. Diaz.
So this is an important question, especially regarding opt-out. So if you look at the elementary school white paper that was issued by members of the Montgomery County Administrative and Principals Association, basically their union, this was revealed in a FOIA, that they had serious concerns. They said, "We want to rebuild trust with the community, and so there are certain things that we need to do." There was, we need to make sure that we communicate regarding intensive materials. They did not support opt-out. They questioned the appropriateness of materials. They questioned whether or not, how we would include parents in the selection of the materials. They said that the teachers were not trained with regards to those materials. All of these questions are still up in the air, and we need to resolve them. That's why I believe in opt-out.
Thank you. Moving on to District Four, Ms. Stewart.
I'll start with opt-out. I do not believe we should have kids opting out of curriculum or out of the classroom when it's being taught. We all are there, I believe, to learn about each other, and also, a lot of this curriculum is really important for learning. Some people don't believe in evolution, for instance. Are we going to have kids opt out of that? So we should trust our professionals to develop curriculum and deliver that to all kids. As far as critical race theory, that's not being taught in our public school system today. So that's not an issue. We should bring in partners. We should work together to make sure that we are teaching about all the lived experiences that our children are having today in our diverse schools.
Thank you. Ms. Evans.
Sure. We live in one of the most diverse counties in the country, and so with that, I do believe that it's important that we are educating our students to be able to live in a world where they are people that are different than them. And so I am all about civility, kindness, and respect. I am currently on the Board. I was a big proponent in making certain that our curriculum was diverse. I do not believe in banning books. I do not believe in opting out of your education. What I do think is important is that we're sharing with our parents and communicating with them along the way what the curriculum looks like in our school system, and making certain that they know ahead of time what's happening so they could ask questions of their teachers, of their principals. I think it's important to always have two-way communication.
Thank you. Moving to At Large, Ms. Montoya.
Thank you. Yeah, critical race theory is not something that's for K through 12 public schools, and I know that that term gets kind of thrown around and has maybe even taken on different meanings than it's supposed to. So I think when we talk about diversity in our public schools, what we're talking about is making sure that all of our kids and families see themselves in the curriculum, in their schools, in the staff, in their teachers. When I was a kid, I didn't see people who looked like me wearing suits like I'm wearing now, and that was really important because I needed to know that I had the options of being these things by seeing people who looked like me in these spaces, in these kinds of dress. So we also have a law called Freedom to Read Act, which was passed during this past legislative session, that lets us know we're not banning books, right? Kids need to learn how to engage with all types of people. I do believe, however, that we need to treat people with respect when we engage, even if we disagree with them, and that's really important in this context.
Thank you. Ms. Harris.
Yes, I think the work of MCPS, we are, diversity is our reality, but inclusion is the work. And our job is to create inclusive and affirming classrooms full of windows and mirrors, where students see themselves reflected in the content that they're learning, in the books that they're reading, and the people that are walking the halls and walls with them, but they're also learning to appreciate those whose lives and experiences, cultural and traditions, are different than theirs. And so I am very definitely on the record, I don't support an opt-out, because the point of education is to create critical thinkers who feel safe and comfortable having difficult conversations. conversations, sometimes asking questions, but always doing so with respect for everyone else in the room and valuing the humanity of everyone.
Thank you. Moving on to the third question, it's going to be on student opportunity gap. What specific initiatives, if any, do you propose or support to ensure all students have equitable access to resources, challenging courses, and effective teachers and administrators? I will start with the at-large candidates again, Ms. Harris.
I love this question. One of the things that I am very focused on is in MCPS, we need a strategic plan for programs because access to our programs is not equitable. It is not equitable geographically. We have, the demand for these opportunities far exceeds the supply, but that's just because of the way these things have been implemented over time without a thorough, comprehensive assessment of where our schools are, where our students are, and looking at the programs and the opportunities we offer and where we're placing them. So, first and foremost for me, a strategic plan for program that looks at every single program that we have, local, regional, county-wide, and ensuring that every single one of them is truly, truly accessible, expanding the number of seats, having regional centers for every great program, and that is where I would start.
Thank you. Ms. Montoya.
Thank you. For our current students, I do think we need to make sure that all of our programs and extracurricular activities are available at all of our schools so people don't necessarily need to leave their own community and neighborhood to get there so that their parents then can also be involved because having our parents involved for our students gives them that level of support and encouragement that they need. I do think though, when we're talking about opportunity gaps, pre-K expansion becomes very important. I was a Head Start graduate. I then went to community college after graduating high school and then four-year college and then law school. So, pre-K does work and we need to make sure that that is available, that we have enough seats and providers. It especially is important for our Black and Brown students. We see these proficiency rates year after year. COVID did not cause this opportunity gap for our Black and Brown students because we've had these same numbers, very low numbers, time and time again. So, we need to make sure that we're reaching all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to District Two, Ms. Diaz.
I think one of the things that we can look at in terms of expanding opportunities is how, especially when we're looking at like math and reading scores, you know, expanding media center hours, working with Montgomery County libraries to make sure that that's open, having tutoring programs available within the schools and outside the schools. I was just recently looking at a post the other day by one of our elementary school principals and they have a volunteer program, volunteer tutoring program that's been expanded by one of their subs. So, I thought that was fantastic. That's something that we should be doing in all of our schools. MCPS has so many good programs, immersion programs, you know, we have at the high school level, the college career readiness, like the auto mechanic schools and such. I think those are opportunities that we should be able to provide our students no matter where they are.
Thank you. Ms. Zimmerman.
I recently heard the opportunity gap called the belief gap and I just want to say that that's a great synonym because our students can achieve and they are capable. I believe that our students need high-quality first instruction. That's something that we talk about as educators and making sure that our curriculums actually match this. We just this year have switched for all schools accessing what's called the Science of Reading, which is a data-driven instruction format for teaching reading. Before that, we knew the science of reading was best, but we chose for multiple years not to pick a program that used that and we chose for multiple years not to switch to a program that could use that when we knew that's what our students needed. I also want to speak to something called early warning indicators. I can tell you that as a current teacher, I can click one button right now and I can tell you those indicators for my students. Parents are asking for those and I believe that we can be giving those to parents to help them help their students better. Thank you.
Thank you. District Four, Ms. Evans.
Sure. I'll give you two examples. One is the board within the last year has put in the budget math coaches. So, what's happening different? Our teachers are being reminded with the help of the coaches because they do know this, but it's really important to know the student and also to know the math. And what they're doing is they're really getting to know their student and struggling as their student would to be able to help them to access their learning better. That's going to close gaps. Another way is we have dual enrollment. Our students are able to graduate with their high school diploma and their associate's degree, allowing them to be able to make getting their college degree more affordable and having a jumpstart right into their career. Competitive edge is what we want.
Thank you. Ms. Stewart.
So, we need to attack the opportunity gap from the beginning, again, with expanding pre-K, working with our private providers and making sure that we have the proper training so we have high-quality pre-K available at the elementary school level. I really want to work on that early warning system, making sure that we are implementing science of reading with fidelity. We should look at outliers for schools that might not be performing well and sending teams from central office to help those schools bring up their standards. And then, something I noticed at high school is we really do have inequitable programs. We need to look at that. And also, the way we have substitutes. So, we need to make sure we have qualified substitutes. Einstein didn't have some math instruction because they didn't have a qualified substitute.
Thank you. Moving on to the fourth question, it will be on security and safety, also a two-part question. What is your opinion on the current state of school, safety and security? And what approaches do you support to improve the current environment so that students, teachers, and administrators are not at risk in school? I'm going to call on District Two candidates and we'll start with Ms. Zimmerman.
The first thing that I want to speak to is the reality of what I live in this every single day. I can tell you that my current classroom doesn't have a working lock. It's horrifying. I can tell you that we have drills to practice if something were to happen. It's terrible. I know teachers that keep lollipops in their classroom to keep their kids quiet. That this reality is so scary to each of us and when I think about these little things like my door not having a lock on it, I directly tie it back to our budget. Where is that in the budget and why isn't someone taking action immediately to take care of that? I think about all of our students and the risk that they take by coming to school every day. I think about how we have actionable steps that we can take and that they need to be done faster rather than at this belabored pace.
Thank you. Ms. Diaz.
So, the issue of safety is something that's very much on my mind. When I was at Gaitersburg High School, you know, when I was there, we had school resource officers and so, we saw firsthand how our school resource officers built relationships in order to prevent incidents from happening. I know because when speaking to them, they shared with me how they stopped drugs from being sold in the school, how they took knives away, things of that nature. Many people talk about the school-to-prison pipeline, that it's being promoted by SROs. This is false. In fact, our suspension levels here in Montgomery County are very low and we're reported by that just only recently in our school studies. So, it's very important to know that SROs are definitely a viable option and an important one for our children and our families to keep them safe. Thank you.
Moving on to District Four, I'll call Ms. Stewart.
First, we need to know what's happening in our schools and because the reporting mechanisms aren't strong enough, we don't know what's actually happened every day in our schools. So, I would like to see a full assessment of safety and climate in our schools. We need to do that with some focus groups so we make sure we actually get all the information. And then, we need to communicate more clearly how to report hate incidents and also, how to make sure to get that bullying form filled out so we can actually track what's going on in our schools. And then, we need to work with outside partners to come in and see where we can make improvements.
Thank you. Ms. Evans.
We can always increase the confidence and trust in our staff and in our students and the best way to do that has been to go to the schools directly to speak with the staff and the students. Our students talked about wanting more alarms on the doors, having badges. We have badges in the schools. Being strategic about where we place cameras, that can always be done, but really, it's been important to build relationships. We want our students to know that safety and security is of the utmost importance and when they come in the school building, they have a trusted adult that they can contact and know and talk to if there's anything happening and going on that they don't feel comfortable about. And so, I've been really happy to see that our schools are really trying to do a great job at getting out into the community and talking and getting to know the parents ahead of school.
Thank you. Moving to at-large candidates, Ms. Montoya.
The reality is that we have some really scary things going on in some of our schools right now and as a parent who sees these things on the news or who hears about the bullying incidents, either from my own children, from other families that I know, parents want something to be done. I think so do our kids. So, but I think we need to, you know, the question we're asking ourselves is where is the line, right? If we're talking about bringing law enforcement into our schools, around our students, where do we draw the line? And time and time again, I actually hear a pattern from most people. We want the line to be drawn at serious incidents. We don't want law enforcement in there hassling our kids. We're not calling them because someone was being disrespectful or it's a classroom management issue. We're talking about guns, weapons, trespassers, drug sales, and mass incidents, right? The things that we know are extremely serious, that's when we want law enforcement involved. But to do that, they have to build connection with our kids so our kids feel like they can come to them to begin with to prevent some of these things from happening.
Thank you. Ms. Harris.
I look at safety and security in kind of two pieces. One is safety to me is does everybody in the building feel safe and welcome and valued being exactly who they are and do they feel a shared responsibility for making their school a place that people want to be? And, you know, when we are creating that kind of a culture, then we are better able to operationalize some of the things that we're doing right now, like our student ID pilots, door alarms. We are operationalizing security assessments of all of our schools to identify issues that can be corrected, both in the short and long term, with things like additional cameras, security assistance, repeaters to ensure there aren't any dead zones in schools. But again, it gets to, if students have a trusted adult in the building, we're getting a long way.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. So, now we are going to close this part of the Q and A forum of the program tonight and we're going to move on to the next part, which is more exciting, is to read some of the questions from the audience tonight. So, thank you to our screeners who've taken the questions for us. And again, each candidate will have 45 seconds to respond to each question and the timer will start once the candidate unmutes their microphone. So, the first question we have from our audience tonight is about transportation and bus drivers. We know that there are severe shortages of bus drivers. So, how will you resolve this challenge? I'll start with District Four, Ms. Stewart.
First of all, we need to make sure we're out there recruiting, making sure that people know that this is a viable career option. So, I'd like to see us, you know, continue to go to job fairs, have job fairs, but also, think about our own kids that are graduating. Some of them might need a job moving forward to help pay for education. So, let's make sure that those job opportunities are available. Also, we could look at some of our retirees to see if this is an option, that maybe they would want to come back and serve our school system in this way. Basically, we should just get the word out and have a really good PR campaign.
Thank you. Ms. Evans.
Anyone looking for a job wants that job to be more attractive based on the wage that you're offering. So, making it a competitive job with a competitive wage with great working conditions. And what, one thing that Montgomery County does very well is provide our bus drivers with a license and they're able to get that without being charged. So, that's something that they get at the, they get, I'm getting off, they get this license paid for by the system, which does not happen in a lot of other places. So, that's one way to incentivize bus drivers is knowing that they don't have to pay for their CDL license and making the wage competitive. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to at-large, Ms. Montoya.
Thank you. I've actually had the opportunity to talk to several of our MCPS bus drivers over the last several months. Some were retirees, some are parents of current MCPS students. Some do it just because they really care about kids and they know we need bus drivers. But I actually heard the same thing from all of them. Even if you've been a bus driver for MCPS for many, many years, they're still facing these really, these schedules that are all over the place. They're piecing together hours so their seniority doesn't seem to mean much in this context. We have folks who maybe are there getting electric buses, but then those buses aren't charged in time for the afternoon. So, their work schedules and work conditions feel very erratic to them. If we want people to want to work for MCPS, we need to remember that this is a workplace and people need to want to be here. A lot of people are doing it just for the kids and I really appreciate that, but at some point, that energy runs out. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Harris.
Yes. You know, compared to our, you know, jurisdictions surrounding us, we're doing better with our pool of bus drivers. But I think the main thing about, if you want to increase the number of employees doing any job in the system, the first thing we have to do is make sure this is a system that treats people well, that people want to be part of. And so, if we want to increase the pool, the number of individuals coming to be our bus drivers, and I love our bus drivers that say, "My bus is the student's first classroom" and they take that work so seriously. But we need to ask our current bus drivers, "What makes you want to do this job and how can we enhance and increase the value that you find in this work? And how do we communicate that more broadly throughout the community?" Like Shever said, we provide the CDL training, the specialized driver's licenses, which we need to continue to do as well.
Thank you. Moving on to District Two, Ms. Zimmerman.
Thank you. I believe we need wage parity for our educational support staff. That's one of the first things that people look for when they're looking for a job, to make sure that they are getting paid and that it will be right for them and their families. I think we also need to look at the workload that we're asking our bus drivers to take on. Ms. Montoya spoke to the erratic nature of it, but I also think about students at the end of a long day, that if there are, if they are on an overcrowded bus, that that is adding to our bus drivers' work. So, how are we making sure that our bus drivers are not driving overcrowded buses, making sure that our students are able to have a seat and stay calm on the bus? I also believe that the licensing support, the getting the CDL, that needs to be better advertised. If people know that they'll be able to get that CDL and maybe take it to a future position, they might be more interested in starting here in MCPS.
Thank you. Ms. Diaz.
So, when my daughters were in elementary school, they took the bus and often their bus rides were sometimes an hour long because they were part of the French immersion program at Maryvale Elementary School. So, I'm very familiar with the whole buses, like, relationships with bus drivers. And one of the things in speaking to them during this campaign is, you know, they want to have good relationships with children. This is what they want to focus on. And so, when I think about bus drivers, I want to make sure that they're safe. I want to make sure that our students are safe on the bus. So, we want to make sure that our students are respectful with their bus drivers, that they have good relationships with them, and make sure that the job is attractive to them in building those relationships. Many people come into education for those relationships with children to help inspire them and motivate them and our bus drivers do exactly that.
Thank you. We're going to move on to our next question from the audience and this topic is on transitioning from high school to college. So, what kind of supports and opportunities will you support so students can pursue a college education? I'll start with the at-large candidates, Ms. Harris.
Thank you. I think making sure that students are getting grounded and exposed in all of the opportunities that they may have available to them as they think about their future and that we are very, very generous in ensuring students understand there are a million pathways to get to any given destination and that we are providing support for our first-generation students through programs like ACES and College Tracks that are very, very focused on that population of students. Making sure that we're giving great supports to our college and career counselors who are directly engaging with our high school students, particularly as they get into that junior and senior year and they're getting support for their FAFSA's and they're getting support for identifying opportunities like fellowships and scholarships. That's work we need to continue to support.
Thank you. Ms. Montoya.
Thank you. I think that for those students who want to transition to college, because we know that there are a lot of different opportunities available for all of our students post-high school and we want to make sure that they know all about those as well, but there are some students, yes, who are going to want to transition to college. And I know what that's about because I had to figure it out myself as well, right? I was a first-generation college student. I went to community college. So, making sure that community college is an option. Montgomery College we have here is a great place. We want to make sure that all of our students can take advantage of dual enrollment, not just our students who speak English as a first language. I know there's some challenges for those of our students who do not to be part of that program because I spoke recently with one of the deans of the college. Making sure that our families also know. Some of our families don't have the experience of going to college and they can't jump in there and just help their kids or help them get the FAFSA. We need to make sure that we have culturally competent information in all of our languages and that we invite our parents to the table.
Thank you. Moving to District Four, Ms. Evans.
Thank you. So, each school has a career So each school has a career counselor, and so making certain that our students are aware of the counselor that is in the building that can help them. In addition, we could do a really great job in being creative and having some of the students that have graduated from Montgomery County come back and talk to our students to kind of give them what to expect when you go off to college. In addition, what we do really well is we have this program called Summer Rise. So our juniors and seniors are able to be able to work in a variety of career opportunities to be able to see if, in fact, the college pathway that they were thinking about in terms of the major, if, in fact, they want to go in that direction, in addition to our career technology education programs.
Thank you. Ms. Stewart.
Well, the first thing we need to make sure is that our kids are ready to take on college. So I would like to look into bringing back semester exams, because that is something they're going to have to encounter in college, and many had not had one yet when they graduate. So we need to also work with the career counselors. At Einstein High School, their counselor left in the, earlier in the fall, and then those kids had a really hard time getting with their counselor so they knew how to apply and move on. Let's work on getting those FAFSA's help, more help out to fill those forms out. And also, the Year of Service offered by Maryland, let's make sure kids know about that. Thank you.
District Two, Ms. Diaz.
In order to prepare our students for college, beyond looking at some of the programs that we're offering, we need to start with implementing a rigorous curriculum. We need to bring back midterms. We need to bring back final exams. The article in the Bethesda Magazine showed that we are failing our students by having lenient absentee policies with grade inflation and for low-grade level curricula. We need to take this seriously. Our children should be reading whole books. When they go into college, many of the college professors are saying that they're not prepared for that. They're not prepared to read entire books. So we need to get our students reading whole books. They need to be writing on a regular basis. We need to implement a strong curriculum for our students so that they are prepared to move on, not only in college, but just their daily lives.
Thank you. Ms. Zimmerman.
Thank you. I think one of the metrics that we're looking at is making sure that students can read by third grade. As someone who does this, I can tell you that last year, over 72% of my students were meeting that metric, which puts them on the MCPS college track. So if we're looking for someone who knows how to do this work, I know how, and I'm ready to do it here. When I also think about this, I think about supporting our college and career counselors in the work that they're doing. I think we need to increase our number of community schools as well. Currently, Kennedy High School is the only community school at the high school level. We have plenty, or we have many, community schools at the elementary school level, but only one at the high school level. There are lots of different supports that our families can be accessing, and by using community schools through the Maryland Blueprint for Education, we can open that up, get more families into the doors, and help them prepare their student for the next step.
Thank you. Moving on to our next audience question, it will be on interpretation services. How will you increase interpretation services for schools in Silver Spring and other places with a huge, a high Latino community? I'll start with District Four, Ms. Evans.
Right now, one of the ways with interpreters is to be able to be creative with that as well. And so I was reading recently where, you know, we haven't really gotten into talking about AI, but that is a way that we could be creative in working with families at our schools. So right now, we don't have enough interpreters, and we don't want to have to use our students to help support our families. So it will require for us to have out-of-the-box thinking. And so we are talking about how are the different ways that we're going to use AI. But for right now, we can just make certain that we have the materials in place to ensure that we have information that we can share with our parents, that they can understand, that they can access, as well as know upfront the events that are going to take place to have interpreters on hand.
Thank you. Ms. Stewart.
Well, we need to make sure that we are appreciating the interpreters we do have. I know that there is a program where you can get a stipend if you work for MCPS to interpret. So we need to look, is that stipend enough for them? And also, is that paying for just interpretation, but also other workload that might come along with that? So I did talk to someone about that just this weekend. Also, we need to make sure that those opportunities, again, are advertised out to even families. Maybe this is a way for family members to make some extra money in the system. And so, yeah, we can think creatively about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to District Two, Ms. Diaz.
As someone who is bilingual and then someone who's served on the PTA, I know how important it is to offer up your time when someone is obviously not understanding. So what's going on in the classroom or has a question about their student, about their child in the classroom? Many times, you know, while I was serving on the PTA, I have done that. As a parent, as a private citizen, I've done that. So we need to encourage our community to step up and to volunteer in our schools. This is the major way that we can help each other. In terms of, you know, make sure that we also have as many resources as possible ahead of time in the languages that our children are speaking in school or in speaking at home. You know, if we have resources in Spanish and Amharic, as much as we can have available, we should be providing them.
Thank you. Ms. Zimmerman.
I want to echo that we need to pay the people who are doing the interpretation. Right now, there is a small stipend available, but this only applies to formal meetings, like an annual review for an individualized education plan or for, like, greater school meetings. But this doesn't apply to, like, those little conversations that happen at dismissal or in the front office, and those are also being interpreted. So we need to make sure that those are being paid for as well, because that is extra work that we're asking for those educators to do. I also think that we need to be offering our MCPS, like, programming in different languages. Currently, it's not being offered in any other language than English. So if someone would like to be an MCPS employee, they have to do that training in English instead of their native language.
Thank you. Moving on to at-large, Ms. Harris.
Yeah, I think it is so important that we do the bare minimum to make sure that we are communicating effectively with our families in the languages in which they feel most comfortable. And, you know, we have interpreters. If you've ever been to a big MCPS town hall or something, you've seen the bank of interpreters sitting in the back of the room in multiple languages. But we don't have a huge pool of interpreters. And the needs of our system for interpretation are not just at big events. There, you know, any day of the week, any time of day, a teacher in a school might need to engage with a family who is not comfortable speaking in English. So I think looking at a broader base of stipends to pull in individuals throughout the community, and also, I did see a great presentation on AI the other day that I think can provide some possibilities.
Thank you. Ms. Montoya.
Thank you. This is a really great question because it's a big problem. When I was a public defender, we had a service where we could call a phone number and access an interpreter that could then appear via telephone to help us interpret with our clients. So when I had a client who had been sitting in jail for two weeks and had no idea what the charges were because they thought the person spoke Spanish, but they actually spoke an indigenous language to their Latin American country, and I was the first person that they had talked to who could actually engage with them because we had this service. So there are other types of services available, even when we don't have a physical person present in the room. I think also creating communities so that parents and other community members might want to come in and help volunteer for those things. I've done it myself to help another parent talk to the person at the front office when they had a challenge and there wasn't anyone else available. Some of our schools don't even have teachers who speak other languages, and so that might not even be an option.
Thank you so much. Our next question is on oversight. The job of the Board of Education is oversight. So what policies would you propose the board review in your first year if elected? I'll start with District Four, Ms. Stewart.
First, I think we have a problem with watching our contracts. I'm sure some of you saw news that our transportation contract was not being followed. I would love to have a position in central office whose job will be to watch contracts over a certain dollar amount, so it'd be large contracts, to make sure that we're following up and making sure that we are, that the contract's being followed, and that we get any money back that we need to. And then that would be reported back to the Board of Education periodically. Also, we should probably look at, I would love to see how we're working, looking at, I'll get to that later. I got to stop. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Ms. Evans.
Yes. The board has over 400 policies. We are policymakers. And so every year, and I serve on the policy committee, let me back up. I serve on the policy committee, and so my job is to ensure that if we do not have a policy in place that should be in place, that can make the work better, that can make it equitable for our students and not have any unintended consequences, that we put it in place. If a policy currently exists, that needs to be amended or revised because our students are not getting the best outcomes, because it's seeing, because it's seeing unintended consequences, we have the ability to make those revisions and to make those amendments. So I take my job very seriously as a policymaker in providing oversight to this school district. 160,000 students, 25,000 employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to at-large, Ms. Montoya.
We need to make sure that our contracts and policies are comprehensive, are clear, irrespective of the subject matter. When people look at a policy, if there's something for a teacher to do, it should be clear to them what those terms mean. I'm an attorney. Words have meaning. If we give vague phrases or vague terms, if we task our teachers with things like, "Well, when you think it might be in the student's well-being," that doesn't clearly say what they're supposed to do, and that then leads to inconsistency. It leads to policies that may not be implemented with fidelity. It leads to contracts that may be missing provisions or that are not being monitored properly. And so then we're losing money, your money, the taxpayers' money, which is not then going to the students and the schools. So is there one specific subject matter policy? No. I think we need to look at all of our policies to make sure that they're clear and comprehensive.
Thank you. Ms. Harris.
Generally, I think that, having just come from the Maryland Association of Boards of Education Annual Meeting, where I serve on the Resolutions Committee, and, you know, for every May policy, it's on a three-year lifespan. And every three years, every policy is reviewed, and it's determined whether, and affirmatively, there's affirmative action to determine whether the policy is going to be, again, supported, if it's going to be amended, or if it's going to be retired. So I do think we need a soup-to-nuts review of all MCPS policies to determine just that very thing. Does every policy, is it still relevant? Identify the ones that need amending. Make sure every policy has a companion regulation. But I also want to make sure, we've already started a workflow analysis to make sure we're identifying the bottlenecks in our contracting procurement MOUs and grant processes that work needs to conclude, and then we need to embed that in policy.
Thank you. Moving on to District Two, Ms. Diaz.
I think one of the policies that we need to look at definitely is a phone-free school. So with the introduction of the phones, we've seen an increase of anxiety, an increase of depression, an increase of loneliness amongst our students. With the decrease of socialization, opportunity cost, social deprivation, sleep deprivation, a lack of independence, a lack of free play, these are the things that we need to change in order for our students to feel confident in themselves, in order for them to be able to focus in the classroom, in order for them to learn and grow as students and as people. So I would look at our phone use in the school and begin a community-wide conversation about how we help our children release themselves from this addiction, take responsibility as parents, and have a strong curriculum with them following it.
Thank you. Ms. Zimmerman.
I believe part of this goes back to transparency. We need to offer up information when we can. We can't fix our darkest parts unless we shine light on them and share that information with the public. I also believe we need an overhaul of our professional growth system. I know that our educational support staff is begging for more support. They currently have three support, like, three supporting staffs, members that can help support them. And there are hundreds of new members that are asking for this additional training so they become better at the position that they already have. I know that our administrators are asking for more support. They're asking for more oversight. They're asking for more training. And part of that has to do with our professional growth system and making sure that we can hold everyone accountable at every level of MCPS.
Thank you. So our next question will be on the teacher pipeline. So we've had a tremendous shortage of college students pursuing careers in public education. What have you done, or what will you do, to make MCPS a destination employer? So I'll start with District Two again, Ms. Zimmerman.
Thank you. As a current MCPS teacher, I am aware of all of the demands that are being placed on our educators. The educator workload is untenable. There are so many things that happen every day that oftentimes I go, "Is this really necessary?" For example, I have to sign in on paper every day. Is that really necessary? There are lots of things that we can go through and eliminate, and some of them have a zero-dollar cost. Another one that could eliminate some work would be asking our educators to set their own meeting times and decide when and who they need to meet with. Right now, our educators are being told who they have to meet with and when, and a lot of times that those meetings aren't able to actually help us do our day-to-day job. So that would be another opportunity where we could eliminate some of the things on their plate, and it would have a zero-dollar cost to the system.
Thank you. Ms. Diaz.
Yes, I think in order to recruit teachers and to retain teachers, we need to encourage teachers to become masters of their content. When we look at the Opportunity Myth, which was presented to us by the MCCPTA, one of the things they talked about was that our students are not getting grade-level appropriate assignments. And one of the reasons why that is, unfortunately, is because many of our teachers are not, they're not masters of their content. They have a general education degree. So when I say masters of their content, I mean, you should have a history degree. You should have a science degree. You should have a physics degree. You should have whatever degree it is that you teach in. You need to excel in that in order to be a teacher now. I also would encourage our teachers to get a master's degree in that content, and I would provide, make sure that we have, well, MCPS already that this funds them, you know, so that, and encourage them to become masters of their content.
Thank you. Moving to District Four, Ms. Stewart.
First of all, I'd like to ask more teachers, like Natalie told us, what would make her life easier? I'd like to talk to our teachers, say, "Hey, what would make your job a little better?" Right now, my discussions with teachers shows that they have really low morale. So let's make that more a pleasant experience for them by asking them. Also, we can grow our own. So we need to work in the high school level and make sure that we're identifying students who would be interested in the teacher profession, and work on internships and apprenticeships to work towards that. And also, let's work on our HR systems so teachers know that they will have a great workplace.
Thank you. Moving to at-large, Ms. Montoya.
I didn't go.
I'm sorry, Ms. Evans.
That's fine. So the Blueprint for Maryland is definitely a right, a step in the right direction. I advocated for that when I served as a president on the board. But what we want to do is make certain that we continue to make the job of teaching attractive. This is the position that prepares all of our students for any job that is out there. So I feel good that Montgomery County, ahead of the blueprint being legislated, that we were already moving towards making certain that our teachers would start out at the salary of $60,000. But it also is important to continue the programs that we have in the school system to make certain that our students that have that interest in being a teacher, that they are getting that help and support from us early on, and so they are able to connect with colleges and have a teacher program that they can go right to. So growing your own and making the job more attractive with pay.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Moving to at-large, Ms. Montoya.
Thank you. I will work with my colleagues and local, state, and federal officials to secure the funding we need to lower class sizes. Our class sizes are simply too big. They were too big before. We increased them last year. Teachers cannot manage that many children at a time. Our children are coming to the classroom with various challenges. Those have increased, and it's just untenable. When I was a public defender, we had a similar situation. Sometimes I would go to court, having to prepare for five or six trials who were all set at the same day and the same time, and I had to be ready to go. 300 cases for a docket day, and you have to be ready to go. And sometimes, increased pay is not even worth it, right? The workload is so untenable, you leave feeling like you failed your clients because you didn't provide the level of care and that they deserve. And I imagine a lot of our teachers feel the same way. So if we can lower those class sizes, that is benefit for our teachers and our kids. So if we can lower those class sizes, that is benefit for our teachers and our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Yeah, it's such a short and long-term problem. And long-term, I worry that we simply are not attracting a next-generation teacher workforce anywhere in the country. And so growing our own is essential, building on programs that we have in MCPS like the Teacher Academy of Maryland and making teaching seem like something that is a great opportunity and that is a very joyful and enriching profession. I think the blueprint priorities are a step in the right direction, talking to teachers very directly. What will make your life easier? Because they will have great common sense solutions, I know. I was one. But I also think some of the great work coming out of the state of Kansas with the statewide teacher survey on engagement and retention is telling us that generationally, teachers want different things and we need to have cafe options in our benefit and our salary packages.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. I'm going to do a quick time check here and it looks like I want to make sure that we have time for a closing statement. So unfortunately, we can't get to all of the questions tonight, but I want to thank all of you for submitting your questions. We are now moving on to the closing statements portion of our program and each candidate will have an opportunity to make a closing statement within one minute. The timer clock will start once I call on you and when you unmute your microphone, we'll start with the at-large candidates, Ms. Harris.
Thank you. Public education is a true public good and I have a passion for this school system and it has been my honor to serve this system for the past three and a half years, to celebrate what's working. And let's be clear, a lot of things are working. I get very frustrated when people just want to throw rocks and to fix what's broken. And having had a seat at the table for the past three and a half years, I see very directly the areas of work that need strong focus, strong leadership, and consistency in implementation and fidelity. And I take great pride in the work the board has done over, moving the system through a time of crisis, creating, moving on with a necessary leadership change and creating the conditions that allowed us to have a robust nationwide superintendent search that yielded an impressive array of highly qualified candidates and an excellent outcome. I am looking forward, onward, forward. I'm in schools all the time. I see great energy happening. I am ready to continue to serve.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Ms. Montoya?
Thank you. Like a lot of families, I moved here because I believed in Montgomery County public schools. And I stay here with my kids because I still believe in Montgomery County public schools. But I have to tell you that I'm also really concerned about school safety and proficiency test scores. So I get really worried when I start seeing social media posts and newspaper articles about bomb threats and bathrooms being closed due to drugs. I feel really discouraged when I see that only 18.9% of our Black students and 12.9% of our Latino fifth-grade students are proficient in science because I know that means we're going to see less Black and Latino chemists, doctors, and science inform policymakers and that makes me concerned. I get concerned because I know that our local, state, federal, and even international leaders come from Montgomery County and they won't continue to if our kids can't learn to read and write. So we really have to frame this as all hands on deck. We have to rebuild trust in our schools and we do that by electing leaders who can model accountability, who can model transparency, and are willing to hold themselves accountable to all of you, the taxpayers and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll call on District Four now, Ms. Evans.
I've been fortunate to do this work for the past eight years and while I was doing this work, I had two daughters go through this public school system. This is a great place to live, to educate children. And I'm reminded of a saying is you don't have to be sick to get better. And I've been able to do this work, particularly during the pandemic. We've learned a lot and I hope that the community has learned a lot in being able to see the work that's been happening, how our children are really being able, are really able to be successful. And they've been able to do that because of the experience of board members that are understanding and know what's happening on the ground and taking the time to make effective change in the moment. That makes, that looks like making certain that our kids can read, that they are ready for college, their career, and most importantly, their community. I have my website, voteshebertevans.com, to learn more about me, November the 5th.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart.
I love our school system, but I know we can do better. There are real struggles happening in our schools every day. We're still, we still need to improve in our reading proficiency scores and we lag in our math scores. Our kids are still doing amazing things every day, but schools need to do more to support them and their teachers. We need better pay and training for staff, smaller class sizes, more staff to support our special populations, which we didn't even talk about today, access to mental health services, and steps to improve safety. The board can't make these improvements on their own. We need to collaborate with others, including all the terrific community partners right here in this room. This is what I've worked on for many years and have proven that I have the dedication and experience it takes to take this next step. So please visit laurastewart.org and act with me to bring accountability, collaboration, and transparency to the Board of Education. I really look forward to partnering with all of you. Let's do this together. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to District Two, Ms. Diaz.
Thank you. One of the reasons why, or the major reason why I'm running for Board of Education is because this is my life's mission to see children excel, to see them meet challenges and become the architects of their own lives as they conquer and defeat those challenges. So it is an honor and a privilege to be here tonight, to be able to discuss all these policies, to discuss my vision for MCPS. I look forward to helping to improve academic scores in our classrooms, to rebuild the foundation of academic excellence. I want to hold our students to high academic and behavioral expectations because I know that they can meet them. I want to prioritize school safety because that's important. If our children are not safe, they cannot concentrate in the classroom. I want to boost teacher morale because I know as a teacher, how important it is that we stay positive, that we stay invested in our classes. I want to make sure that we're using our resources responsibly and that we are engaging the community. So many in our community are looking at our budget and are keeping MCPS accountable. Let's keep that going by encouraging and respecting parental and community engagement. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Ms. Zimmerman.
Thank you. I don't know how I got so lucky that I get to both open and close this forum. I believe that public education is the greatest act of optimism and the best investment that we can make in our students and in our community. My biggest strength is coming from a classroom. It is my goal to speak from the classroom and into policy from this space and in this room. I am proud to have the support of my fellow educators through the Apple ballot and I'm proud to see the work that they do every single day. But every year, I see approximately 25 to 30% of my colleagues leave the school, leave the system, leave education as a whole. And this just isn't theoretical to me. These are the people that I work with every day. These are my colleagues. And being able to come with these classroom connections and the relationships that I have with educators and students, I'm able to speak about what's happening in our classrooms every single day. We need people on the board who have these connections and know what's happening. I plan to be that champion for our students and our classrooms. Please join me at zimmermanforboe.com. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Please give our candidates a round of applause. So on behalf of the League of Women Voters tonight, we want to thank all of the candidates, all of you in the community who have joined us in person tonight. There is, there will be a recording of the forum, Susan said. It will be available on the League's YouTube channel, courtesy of Montgomery Municipal Cable Television. And please don't forget to vote. Vote by mail. I know the ballots are already starting to hit your mailboxes. Vote early between October 24th to October 31st and vote on General Election Day, November 5th. Have a good evening, everyone.[1761.41][1761.41]